I'd like to call to order the City Council, Library Board, Housing Authority Board, and the City Council representing the Redevelopment Successor Agency Regular Meeting of Thursday, September 3, 2015. Bill, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our home.
A roll call, Cindy?
Councilmember Kite.
Here.
Councilmember Townsend.
Here.
Councilmember Smartridge.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Wild.
Here.
Mayor Hobart.
Here.
Well, the first thing we have on the agenda is something we've all been looking forward to, and that is an update on the football team. One win, no losses thus far this year. Undefeated, as we like to say. And we'll get this update by our Principal, Ken Wagner, of the school, and Athletic Director, Chris Calderwood. Would you fellows come up and first take our congratulations on the great start for the new season, and actually, the great work that you've done over the past two years, putting together a team that was really quite remarkable considering the absence of seniors. We're all very proud of the work you've done and all of the students. So tell us what's going on now, what's in the plans, and what we can expect.
So, of course, we appreciate any opportunity we have to talk about school and sports programs and athletics. Mr. Calderwood's here today to talk a little bit about football specifically, and of course, we want to share some of the other great things that are happening with the start of Ranch Mirage High School this year. And yes, 1-0 to start, so we like being undefeated in any case, in any opportunity we have. Long season left to go. Obviously, a big game this Friday night, and our second game, and so we look forward to that. One of the things I -- did we get our video? Oh. Yes, please. Before, you know, we can talk all day long, it's always better to demonstrate some of the great things that we love to show, and so we have a video that we'd like to show you today.
We'd like to see that. Somewhere along the line, though, if Coach, probably, Coach, if you'd clue us in on how a team that hasn't had a senior has got a starting tailback who's a freshman?
Starting quarterback is now a sophomore. He started last year as a freshman, though.
Oh, okay. So, that's pretty newsworthy right there in and of itself.
Yeah, it's exciting stuff. You know, when you start a new school, of course, you start the first year with just freshmen and sophomores, and so this young man wasn't even in school our first year. He came last year when we had freshmen, sophomores, and juniors, and earned a starting job, and now he's a sophomore starting. But he also went on to earn a varsity letter in both track and basketball after the football season last year, so he was a three-sport varsity letterman as a sophomore, or as a freshman, and now he's a sophomore with a lot of experience going into, you know, a season that I think is going to be very indicative of the kinds of things he can do.
What's his event in track?
He did a lot of things. He was a jumper and a sprinter, and I think was a hurdler as well, yeah. So he did a lot of different things in track. He was a sixth-man kind of defensive specialist in basketball, very talented young man. And he's one of a whole bunch of underclassmen that we have that are very talented. And now that we have four years, we have seniors, and, you know, they're contributing. It's really exciting to see what's happened and to watch them grow, because, like I said, when we got them first, and we put all those pictures up on the wall when they were just little freshmen and sophomores, and now they're going into their senior year and get a big win last week against Coachella Valley, against a very established team with a senior quarterback who was 6'3", 230 pounds, and completely shut him down, and they did some great things. So, it's fun. Now we have our home opener this week against Cathedral City. Big game. It's being streamed live on Fox Sports West, so if you go to our website, you can get all the links and everything. You can actually watch the game live. We'd rather have you be there live and watch it on your device while you're at the game.
Yeah, right.
But you can watch the game from anywhere you can get internet access.
Well, that's good to know. Why don't you give us the time of that again in the day?
Seven o'clock, seven o'clock this Friday night against Cathedral City. It'll be our home opener, second game of the year, so, but that'll be streamed live on Fox Sports West. Every week, Fox Sports West broadcasts five games. One goes on to Fox Sports West TV channel, and the other four are streamed live on the internet, and you can actually go and choose between the different games and watch those as they're happening.
Well, that's fantastic. One last question before you get to that film. How fast are your milers running, or are you doing 1,500 meters, whichever way?
They run the 1,500 in high school. I'm not sure what exactly the times are.
Okay. Then I won't tell you what mine was.
You can go ahead and tell us.
I know that the first liar doesn't have a chance. Next time we talk. Okay.
We'll have times for you the next time. Couple other things. So, as you all may know, we now have a new endowment at our school for the stadium. We will now have the Jerry Argovitz Stadium. So we received that contribution from the Jerry Argovitz, and so, just like we have the Helene Galen Performing Arts Center, now we're going to have the Jerry Argovitz Stadium. So that's exciting, and another contribution to Ranch Mirage High School from, you know, local philanthropy, so that's an amazing thing. You know, we started our automotive program this year, so we have lots of students. Our local automotive groups are excited for us to be training students for them, and so that's an exciting new addition. You know, our culinary program is two years in and growing still, and now we're going to have an automotive program to anchor that as well. So, providing, trying to do our best to provide the community with students prepared to go on. We brought with us today some courtesy cards, so that if you do come to any of the high school events, you'll be able to just bring a courtesy card. We leave those with Mr. Binder, you know, Sheridan.
Dr. Wagner?
Thank you.
And then, in addition, Richard Kite's going to be here this Friday night, so we're excited that he's going to be testing out our luxury box. In our stadium, we have luxury box suites that we rent out, and so people can take advantage of that nice little air conditioning opportunity while they're watching the games. So, as far as we know, we're one of the only schools around that has anything like that, any opportunity like that, and last year, quite a few people took advantage of it, and it was, it's a great opportunity. It's the best view in the stadium, and it's air conditioning, and it's a great little opportunity. So we brought your passes and stuff with you. Football game, so we had freshmen start at four o'clock, and then the varsity game starts at seven.
Is it freshmen or JVs?
Freshmen on Friday. The JV game is actually today over at Cathedral City at four o'clock.
So we have three separate?
Yeah, we have three different levels.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah.
That'd be like the B-team, wouldn't it? BJVs and varsities.
The JV is, you know, the junior varsity team. Those are mostly sophomores and some juniors. Freshman team is all freshmen. There are a few freshmen. Obviously, last year, we had a freshman move up and be the varsity starting quarterback, but we like to try and keep the freshmen together if we can at that level, get them some success, and then they move up either to the JV or the varsity the next year. We also have, girls volleyball is starting today. They open up at Palm Desert. Cross country will open in a couple weeks. Our first girls tennis game was yesterday, so we're just getting in the swing of all of our fall sports, and it's real exciting. If we could turn the heat down, it'd be great.
And then lastly, you know, we've done a especially good job over the last couple years of publicizing through our website. So ranchmiragehighschool.org has promotional videos on it, constantly changing new videos that are highlighting things that are happening at the school. Right now, it gets about 2,500 hits a day, so it's getting good traffic. Not only our students, but our families are able to communicate and get communication from the school through our website, and it's very, very active that way. We operate a lot of Facebook pages, so if you're on social media, definitely like our links, and so you can stay active and current with everything that's happening at the school, both athletically and just with the school in general. We have our back-to-school night next Wednesday night, and so our parents will be able to come on campus and meet and greet with their teachers and everything else, so. And again, musical theater. We've got five shows planned for the year. If you have seen those before, you know they're amazing and great, and so if you have a chance to come out and see those again this year as well, it's a great evening opportunity. So as you can see, every day we live the dream in Ranch Mirage, and every day in paradise, every day.
I ought to be young again, huh?
Ken, how many students do you have in school now?
We're almost at 1,600 this year, and we're still a little shy. Our senior class is smaller than the other classes, so as the other classes roll in, we'll probably add about another 100 to 150 next year.
I read a couple of weeks ago about the million-dollar gift that was given to the district, and it said it was going to form a sports institute. Can you tell us a little bit about that?
Sure.
Yeah, that's, again, this is the gift he's talking about from Jerry Argovitz to name the stadium, and Jerry actually started working with our kids about midway through last year. He talks to our kids about, you know, motivational things, how to be successful, and the one thing that he does that's kind of unique is he talks a lot to the kids about how they can be involved in athletics if they're not necessarily an athlete. So, he exposes them to a lot of the different things that are ancillary to athletics at the higher levels, that you don't have to be an athlete, you know, being a trainer, a coach, you know, an agent, all those kind of things. And so, he brings his experience, he brings a lot of the people that he knows in to talk to the kids, shows them, gives them opportunities to ask questions of people that they wouldn't normally get to see, make sure they understand that in order to get to the next level, you have to do this, and this, and this, and this, and so forth. And so, he actually started that last, about midway through last year, ran through the end of the year, and he'll be starting it up again real soon. But that's the Jerry Argovitz Sports Institute, and it's in its infancy, but it'll be, it's really going to be something once it gets going.
This will be available to all the students of the district or just the high school?
Eventually, eventually, it's starting with just a few students in the football program right now, but it's going to then spread to the rest of the school and anybody in the district who wants to take advantage of it.
Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, when you see that film, it makes you feel very proud that that facility is in Ranch Mirage. It just looks terrific, and the students look happy. The facility is just marvelous, a great contribution to the community, and we thank you for your effort.
Thanks. We're real proud of it, and, you know, the thing that was amazing about that video is that was all filmed on the first day of school. So all those things took place on the very first day of school, and it's, and like you said, you know, there's something about seeing kids smiling that just makes it a gratifying feeling.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you guys very much. We look forward to seeing you again soon.
Thank you for letting us be here today.
Our pleasure.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to non-agenda public comment. Two people have provided cards. Dr. Ronald Levy.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Ronald Levy. I'm an orthopedic surgeon with over--
Can you get that microphone closer to you and, yeah, there we go.
I'm an orthopedic surgeon with over 40 years' experience. I'm on the staff at Eisenhower Medical Center. Was also an All-American soccer player, if you ever need a soccer coach. Anyway, my purpose here today is to request that you change the tobacco retail licensing ordinance from age 18 to age 21. I have a lot of material to back this up from the National Academy and internal medicine, and all my colleagues are in favor of this. The problem with the teenage smoking is the fact that they're very difficult to get weaned from cigarettes after the age of 20. If they, they start, some of them start at age 12, in my experience, and some of them start after maybe age 21. The people that start after age 21 are much easier to wean from cigarettes if that becomes necessary for their health, but the ones that are teenagers or even pre-teensagers are very difficult to wean from cigarettes. I know, certainly feel that this is a legitimate request. There are other cities who have already done this, and I think it would be a good idea. There are about 40 million smokers in the United States at this time, and a lot of medical costs are really involved in taking care of these people, and if that was diminished even by 10, 15, or 20 percent, the medical bills in this country would be a lot less, and the cost of healthcare would be a lot less. I'm sure you're all aware that common problems with smoking involve lung cancer, throat cancer, stroke, COPD, heart attacks. All these things are contributed by smoking cigarettes, and sometimes it's impossible to get people to stop smoking. So I'm recommending that, as I have in others city council meetings, that the age be 21 instead of 18 for legal purchases of tobacco, all tobacco products. The other thing is that the cost of smoking complications are basically in the hundreds of millions of dollars per year, and if that cost were cut down, obviously, it would save everybody a lot of, not only trouble, but financial difficulties. The healthcare, as you all know, healthcare costs have skyrocketed in the past few years, and this is an effort also to keep control of that. And it can only be done if every organization, including cities, local governments, even county and state, are able to control the sale of cigarettes and other tobacco products to age 21 as it is with alcohol. So, my colleagues and I all feel that it should be the same situation as getting alcohol age 21, and we feel pretty strongly about that, and I want you to consider changing the licensing ordinance to that. I have a lot of material from the National Academy of Science. I just, I have four little pamphlets, and I'll leave with a clerk if you want to read them. It basically has a lot of statistics regarding this issue, and I think you'll find it very interesting. I would appreciate it very much if any of you disagree with me. I'm leaving my card here if you want to talk to me about it, or if you want to get a little more deeper into the situation, I'd be happy to discuss it with you, and I would also like to eventually find out what action, if any, is taken by the city council. Thank you very much for listening.
Yes, please do leave that with our coat.
Okay, thank you very much.
The next speaker, Stan Levinson.
Mayor Hobart, members of the city council, I would like to first thank one of your employees, a lady by the name of Sandra Johnson, who's in charge of code compliance. She has spent untold hours getting bit by fire ants and whatever other things that can happen to you at Ranch Mirage Country Club on the golf course.
They found out, Stan, that she bites back.
I hope so. But anyway, she deserves to be recognized by the members of the council for having put in the time and effort and all that went into doing her reports and to generating the complaints and violations that she was able to do within a fairly early, fast timeframe. Secondly, on behalf of the association that I come from, Ranch Mirage Country Club Association, the HOA, we'd like to express our thanks to Mayor Pro Tem Ted Wild. We appreciate you coming as an observer, and that way, whatever we claim, you can either attest to it being true or false, okay? And we had a meeting with the people who recently bought the golf course. They have not come to the city and discussed anything about what their intentions are, but basically, their attorney and one of their partners, the same person, made a comment to us and said that we didn't buy a golf course. We bought dirt and land, and now they're making it look like dirt and land. It hasn't been watered, it doesn't need to be mowed, because it's all dead, and it's just turning into a real nightmare for all of the residents that live there. And so, anyway, I know that we can't do anything further until they make an application to the city, but we certainly hope that you'll read them, the first page or so of the big red book, the general plan, and maybe go over the specific plan that exists for that place, because we invite you all to come over and take a tour of our facilities, and you will be, it's like heaven and hell, the condition that the homes and the streets and the things that we do are, and the other side down there is what has occurred with this new owner. And it's starting to affect the city's image too, on account of the outside perimeter that we have along Bob Hope and Frank Sinatra. It has been mowed one time since June 17th or so, when they closed their loan and, or closed the purchase of the country club. And it looks like hell, quite frankly. It's just a mess, and their ponds out in front, which used to look fairly decent when they were clean and working, they've been empty since before these guys bought it, and they're making no effort to do anything, and, like I said, they've been written up. I do have a question for whomever can answer it, and that is, currently, they're suffering of, they're being fined, I think it's $100 a day for 11 violations, and I know that ultimately it can go from 100 to 200 if they don't act and abate the problems that they've got, and then if that isn't handled, it goes to 500. And I was just curious if somebody up here can tell me the timeframe for moving from one level of fine to the next level.
We're going to ask the anteater. Sandra Johnson.
Okay, so the second citation was issued last week, Thursday. They have 10 days to comply, after which time they don't goes to the third level, which is $500 per count, which is per violation.
That's fantastic. I feel like you deserve a commission for, if this thing works out well, you've contributed a lot of money to the public coffers. I see the finance guys not complying with that.
Yeah, that's the fund police over there. He's not helping it.
Well, anyway, I thank you for coming here and today, and I appreciate all that you've done for us, and the homeowners of Ranch Mirage Country Club have expressed their absolute "thank you," you're the most fantastic thing since toast.
Thank you very much. We toast, appreciate that.
And thank you to the, we toast. Thank you, Councilmen, for listening and putting up with me. Thanks.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on a matter that is not on today's agenda? Seeing none, we'll close the public session, and we'll go to board member comments. Let's start down here. Richard?
Thank you, Dana, and good afternoon, and welcome back, everybody, for New Year. You're going to be amazed when you see the number of events that are going to occur over the next few months, and you'll see that Ranch Mirage is certainly still on the move. I'd like to take a couple of minutes to give you information on a program that we co-sponsor with the McCollum Theater. Over the last decade, the city has supported the McCollum Theater with grants every year, and we've worked out an arrangement with the theater that we will provide money for them, and they will provide reduction in some of the programs that we offer to our residents. And we're trying to focus on programs that will be for the total family, so that the kids that normally would not get an opportunity to go into the McCollum will have an opportunity to really see the best in entertainment. And so Ted is on the subcommittee with me, and we met with Mitch Gersonfeld, the CEO of the McCollum, a few months ago, and we selected three programs that we thought were appropriate for the Ranch Mirage families. The first one is on Sunday, November 22nd, and that's the Kingston Trio. And all of you who are as old as I am will remember the Kingston Trio in San Francisco and Hang Down Your Head Tom Dooley. So, they will be here on the 22nd of November. Then after that will be the Peking Acrobats, and we have them every other year back for their expertise and their fun, and that will be on January 10th in the Sunday afternoon. And then the third program is entitled "It's Magic," and it features magic, comedy, sleight-of-hand, stage illusions, and it's really a great program. The council is really pleased to be a co-sponsor with the McCollum and provide our Ranch Mirage residents with reduced ticket prices for all the shows. So if you'd like more information, you'd like to acquire tickets, you can contact the McCollum box office or Ranch Mirage City Hall, but it's a great program, and the prices are all about 50 percent of what you'd normally pay when you go to the McCollum. So it's a great opportunity to see entertainment at its best. So, look forward to seeing you all there this year. So look forward to seeing you all there this year as we begin another great year. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Iris?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, and I wanted to make comment about our wonderful library and the fact that we have this program called Walking with the Stars. It started last year, and it has become extremely popular. I know my husband and I walk over there probably four or five days a week, and we have firsthand experience of how beneficial it has really been to a lot of people. It has created a real core of walkers that enjoys being with each other. There's usually about eight or 10 walkers at a time. There's two lanes, and it offers the opportunity to walk a little bit slower if you want or a little bit faster. We play music. It's on carpet. We make it as enjoyable for everyone to get out of the hot weather and breathe some fresh air-conditioned air. So it's exceptionally rewarding when you hear people comment. One woman said that she had been walking since June, and she had already lost 30 pounds. Another lady came and told me that she was so thrilled because her husband, who had been in the ICU at the hospital about six weeks ago, was now walking. He was required to walk, but there was really no place he felt comfortable until he realized that walking at the library was such a fine option. And now he's recovering. He can sit down every once in a while when he gets a little fatigued, but stand up again when he wants to join the group and enjoy the walking with other people. So I want to thank David Bryant at the library and everyone connected with this wonderful program for making it available. It is now, instead of running only from 9 to 12, five days a week, it is now going to be run from 9 to 2 o'clock so we can include a lot of people who can take a lunch break, and it will also be done on Saturday mornings. So it will go partway through October, and then next year we'll do it again, and we hope you'll all come out and join us. It's a fun thing, and people really like to be together and take pride in their library. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Iris, Charlie?
Just happy to be back and wishing everybody a great season to come. Looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. The weekend is honoring America's workforce on Labor Day. It symbolizes the end of the summer for many, but Labor Day is really our national tribute to the commitment workers have made to strengthen the country, prosperity, and well-being. Over the years, American workers have contributed to the highest standard of living in the world and the greatest industrial growth the world has ever known. For that, we all are very proud and grateful, and it's our commitment to them. And the other commitment we should be making for everyone is to be very careful this weekend. It's one of the heaviest traffic weekends of the year, so be careful and be safe. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, too.
Okay, I'll pass. We'll move on now to the minutes of July 16. Is there a motion to accept the minutes?
Oh, they are.
Second? Proven second, please vote.
Councilmember Smart, Rich, could you draw your vote? Thank you.
Motion passes unanimously. We'll move now to the consent agenda. I'm going to ask that we pull item number two, and I'm also going to ask, in fact, I'll do it this way, if there's no objection, I'd like to remove item number four from the agenda and have it referred to the Budget Committee for further discussion. Is there any objection to my doing that? Does anybody?
No.
Okay, so it'll be so ordered then without objection. So Randy, what do we have? And can you tell us what number two is also about when you get through number one?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, good afternoon. Your consent calendar is fairly short today. Item number one is to waive full reading of today's ordinances. Item number two, Mr. Mayor, is to be pulled for the city manager's intern to make a presentation on that. Item number three, on your consent calendar, is approval of a resolution authorizing the execution of an MOU and disposition of interest in city property at the northeast corner of Bob Hope and Ramone Road. Dustin or Josh, can you show the Google map on that? Basically, the property owner gave the city, that's the Lazar property, gave the city some land on the north side of Ramone, on the south side of his property. The city received a $900,000 CMAC grant. He's paying roughly 10%. The city's paying about 90%, and will be widening the road. In order to widen the road, we needed the MOU, and and we needed the property slivered to be dedicated to the city. Then on the east side of Bob Hope, Josh, if you could just point to the northeast corner, there was some excess right-of-way there from years ago when the county probably anticipated that Ramone Road would have a widened intersection with I-10, but instead, as you see, we've extended Bob Hope, so it's a perpendicular access point to Interstate 10. So that excessive right-of-way on the north side of Ramone, east of Bob Hope, has been quit claimed or would be with this consent item back to the property owner. It's the same property owner on both sides of Bob Hope. It is the Lazar Family Trust. Thank you, Josh. Number four, as the mayor mentioned, has been tabled for review by the Budget Subcommittee. Item number five, on your consent calendar, is the Quarterly Treasures Report. Item number six are your contracts, and item number seven are demands, and we are here to answer any questions. Thank you.
I'm wondering if Isaiah could sort of summarize the Quarterly Treasures Report. Can you do that without pushing too hard?
We did a little bit better than the benchmark.
Yeah, and that was the part I had underlined, as you can see, here, Isaiah, to summarize, mainly the second paragraph on page 5-1 and anything else that you think is relevant.
Yeah, we we set a benchmark for comparing actual results of our portfolio to really what's happening in the market. And on page 5-2, we summarize or quantify how our portfolio did compared to the benchmark that we've set. And, you know, just to remind everyone, these numbers or percentages are not actual returns. This is a total return perspective, and total return takes into account changes in market value prices, so unrealized gains and losses. And so we not only want to know, you know, are investments earning it, but changes in the market activity also affect the value of the current investments you're holding, and how are we doing with what's happening in the market and the changes in the market compared to what we're still holding on to. And so good news is, is that we are beating the benchmark, and the benchmark is the one to five-year Merrill Lynch U.S. Treasury Index, which is every treasury that's issued between one and five years for that period. So the fact that we're beating that and we're pretty much a treasury and agency-only portfolio is still really good. The actual report itself is designed to give the council, you know, all the detailed information as possible, but really, page 5-4 is a nice summary snapshot of where's our money at, what categories are we tracking this money in, so who does this money belong to? So page 5-4, we have really the city portfolio up at the top. We represent multiple agencies, and so the successor agency is one of those agencies that we represent, so that's their money right there. We also have foundations that we manage their money as well, so anything that is outside of our city portfolio is broken out here under the Library Foundation. And then we also have assessment districts, which are basically just bond proceeds that we manage as well.
Thank you very much, Isaiah.
Dana?
Yes.
Just a just a comment for Isaiah. He and I briefly talked about one of the items on page 5-4 last week regarding the LEAF money that is about $11 million and addressed the issue as to whether we could get a better rate of return on that money by moving it out of LEAF and into treasuries. And as he pointed out, that a lot of this money is earmarked for other items coming up, such as the Ritz Spa Suites and some other items. So I think we've really maximized the rate of return at this point off of the available funds, and I think he's done a really good job in managing the portfolio.
Thank you, Richard. I think we all share that feeling.
Thank you.
But you haven't done much for my personal funds. Okay, let's see. Now, the item number four, is there anything further on yours? Have you done six?
Yes, yes, I have.
Okay, then we'll go. We can have, can we have a motion then to approve items 1, 3, 5, and 6, and 7?
Please vote.
Okay, thank you very much. Passed unanimously. Item number two has been pulled so that our interim city manager can give us an explanation of what this complex issue, a series of issues, is all about. So Danny Delgadillo? No. Danny Trudillo?
Okay, good afternoon, Mayor, and members of the city council. The item I will be presenting today is for the council's approval of the resolution to execute quitclaim deed for the strip of land back to the property owner, as it is no longer needed for a future public road. The item on your agenda is to release a half-street section that was dedicated to the city in 1986. The road is no longer part of a city's general plan, so it is no longer needed. Can we please pull up the subject site? So as you can see, the east half, can you please highlight the section? The east half of Section 30 was annexed to Rancho Mirage in 1985. Section 30 is bounded by Dyna Shore on the north, Gerald Ford on the south, Bob Hope on the west, and Monterey on the east. In 1986, the city approved a single home permit on a sub, on the subject site. A condition of approval required the applicant to dedicate the northerly 44 feet to the city. At the time, a public road was planned here to connect Bob Hope to Monterey. When the Section 30 circulation plan was approved, the intention was to keep cut-through traffic out of Section 30 to preserve the peace and quiet of the neighborhood. The future street was deleted from the general plan, so the 44-foot strip that was dedicated is no longer necessary. Mr. Peter Solomon owns the property now and has requested that the city vacate the strip of land. Staff concurs. Mr. Mayor, the recommendation in the staff report is approval of the resolution to execute quitclaim, quitclaim deed for the strip of land back to the property owner, as it is no longer needed for a future public road. Mr. Binder and I are here to answer any questions that you may have, as well as our city engineer, Bill Enos, who I would like to thank for putting this report together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Interim City Manager. I have two questions. One, if the property had been given, had been taken from Peter Solomon and is being given to Peter Solomon, Inc., are there any legal ramifications to that that we should be concerned about? And should we address that question to you or to the city attorney?
I believe you should address that, any legal questions to the city attorney.
Good call. Who are actually quit claiming it to is a successor in interest to the entity that dedicated to us in the first place.
Steve, can't hear you.
I know you're new to presentations, but can you speak up a little bit?
The entity we're quit claiming it to is the entity that is the successor in interest to the entity that dedicated it to us in the first place.
Yes. Actually, Michael and Kathleen Sintus owned the property in 1986 when the single-family home permit was approved, so technically, they dedicated the land, but the dedication goes back to the property regardless of the property owner, right, Steve?
Remember that, Danny?
Right owner.
Danny, also, I had a question. The last paragraph on page 2-2, it says, I'm picking it up mid-sentence, "Transfer of the property would be accompanied by a reservation of an easement over the entirely of the property." Two questions. Should that word be entirety with a T over the entirety of the problem, property?
I would have to refer back to our city engineer who finished this staff report, but I think it would be entirety.
You just got to do some fast thinking on your own.
No, it's entirety. I would believe that it should say the entirety.
You'd say it's a typo, would you?
Yes.
Okay, that makes sense to me. The other, the other thing is this, this is going to be a have and, what's the word I'm looking for? Hold on a second. An easement over the entirety of the property. I mean, that seems extremely broad for an easement. You usually get an easement over some portion of the property. So let me ask the city attorney, who's got all answers. How does, how does it work when you have an easement over the entirety of the property?
Well, this this easement, the easement itself is actually pertains to a portion of the property, and it pertains to the certain, a certain type of use. So it's my understanding that when this easement was first dedicated to the city, it was dedicated to the city to accommodate an extension of, was it 35th?
Yes, it was 35th at the time, yes.
Yeah, so sometimes we have an easement that covers the entire property, but it actually pertains just to a portion. And what we're doing today, if the council approves, is we're vacating it, and so it lifts that use off the property or eliminates that use of the property, and the underlying ownership reverts back, well, actually, we never took the underlying ownership, but the interest that we had reverts back to whoever the underlying owner is.
Mr. Mayor, I think it really should be clarified that the easement is not on the entirety of the property, but rather on the 44-foot northerly strip of land.
The entirety of that strip?
Yes, the entirety of that strip, because that's where the utilities do and would go in the future.
All right, then.
It's a portion of that.
Is there any further discussion or questions on this subject? Anybody in the audience wish to discuss this subject? Hopefully not. Good, thank you. Put that man down. You stay there. You can't talk. That'll look different when it on TV. It'll look very controlled. Okay. All those in favor of passing item numbered?
Item two.
Two. Signify by voting yes, opposed by voting no. And it passes unanimously. We will now march onward to the next item is the discussion of the CV Link update. Let me try briefly to summarize some of what's gone on in the recent weeks. As of this moment in time, if the CV Link were in existence, SEVAG, Coachella Valley Association of Governments, which has one representative from each of the cities, SEVAG has designated nobody to be in charge of paying any of the operations and maintenance of the CV Link. So as of this moment in time, if the CV Link existed, there would be nobody charged with the responsibility of maintaining it or operating the CV Link. One of the means of payment for the operations and maintenance of the CV Link that has been suggested by SEVAG is that we use Measure A funds to pay for a substantial portion of the upkeep and maintenance of the CV Link. Measure A funds are a fund of money that exists because the voters of the County of Riverside, first in 1988, and then again extending it in the year 2002, passed a one-half cent increase in Riverside County sales taxes. That one-half cent generates, I've forgotten the exact number, but somewhere around $150 million a year. million a year for the Coachella Valley, maybe $130 million, something like that. Part of that money, part of that Measure A money comes to the cities directly, and part of it goes to CVAG to dispense it according to a long and well-established program of using that money exclusively for the repair and maintenance of roads, bridges, intersections. Now, at the moment, like I said, there's no money designated for maintaining CV Link. The suggestion is taking some of the Measure A funds away from the roads that are in disrepair and the intersections, and taking those funds and using it to pay for the maintenance of CV Link. Ranch Mirage has raised the issue of the legality of such an approach, because it's pretty darn clear, not absolutely, that when the ordinance was passed, it stated in its preamble and elsewhere, it stated that the money would be used exclusively for taking care of the debilitated nature of the sorry roads of Riverside County. Those roads are still, if you're reading the local newspapers and magazines, California leads the nation in debilitated roads. Our county is like the 14th worst county in the United States, which is another way of saying, that Measure A money is desperately needed for our roads. There is a movement underway to take some of that Measure A money, and the amount, as it is stated in the master plan of the CV Link, is to have over 40% of the maintenance and operations of the CV Link paid for by Measure A funds. The number that the experts that have been hired by CVAG to write the master plan, they estimated that future operations and maintenance would cost, in the first full year of service, $1.6 million. So 40% of that would amount to about $600,000, more or less. So CVAG is proposing that we take something like $600,000 of our Measure A monies, take it away from the roadway improvements, and put it on this bike and electric vehicle path called the CV Link. Ranch Mirage has been in the forefront of trying to oppose that attempt to diminish the Measure A account. We've asserted a variety of grounds, but I wanted to tell you that the problem continues to be a problem. Let me give you a not hypothetical example, I just simply won't name the name of the city that I'm talking about. But there was, in this past week, on the CVAG agenda in the Transportation Committee, there was an effort to take $1.8 million of the Measure A funds and apply it to this city without the appropriate authority. To spend Measure A money, you have to have your project on, it's a list that looks like that. The lowest level means this road, or this intersection, or this bridge is on the list and is eligible for Measure A funds. And then the higher you go up, this road, or this bridge, or this intersection is also entitled to it, and it has a higher priority because of the danger or the state of dilapidation or whatever. And it goes all the way up to the top. Well, to take money from any of these projects and give it to a project that is not on the list violates every rule that we've been following since we have been using Measure A funds, since the bill was first passed in 1988 and then renewed in 2002. So I mention this because it takes a certain amount of paying attention to understand the relationship of Measure A funds to CV Link, Measure A funds to roadway repairs, and people, for the most part, don't know that Measure A funds are limited to one fund. And so our hope is that the residents of Ranch Mirage recognize that when somebody says they want to pay for something with Measure A roads, with Measure A funds, I'm sorry, want to pay for something that's not on this priority list, it's called the TIPS list, TPPS, if they're wanting to put money into something that's not on that list, they're violating the voter's intent at the time Measure A was enacted, and it is probably illegal to do so. So be alert to the issue, and hopefully be responsive when you have a chance to inform others of the problem, because Measure A funds shouldn't be paying for a bike path in an electric vehicle path that goes 50 miles through the valley. Anyway, that's, that's it for now on that subject. That's the update. If anybody has any questions, Richard?
Dana, I've had calls from a number of Ranch Mirage residents in the last week or so concerning a recent publication, Desert Sun, which reported the city of Cathedral City was trying to go ahead with a project before the rest of it was approved. They want to know how this can impact the city of Ranch Mirage at this time.
What's, what's happened is, with virtually no notice, we had on the Transportation Committee, of which Mayor Pro Tem Ted Wile is the former chair of that committee, when he got his agenda and staff report regarding that matter that you're talking about, Richard, Cathedral City, that was the first notice anybody had. Staff has read it, I've read it, others have read it. Cathedral City had two grants from the state of California, one for around $300,000, one for around $400,000. Those grants, they tell us, expire in 2016, I think it is, next year, maybe 2017. And so they're saying that because those grants will expire, and those grants have been transferred from Cathedral City to whom those grants were originally made, they've been transferred by Cathedral City to CVAG, and CVAG is putting it into the CV Link thing. It does create concerns about building something, just a part of the path. This is the path, and this much of it is being built. It sets a precedent. They don't have the funding, CV Link does not have the funding. They've raised $55 million. They project that it's going to cost them $100 million. So if you start building little pieces here and there, you could get into a situation where you're stuck with something in your city, but Cathedral City wants it. We were told that it was legal to do it. Nobody, people talked about the efficacy of doing it this way. There are a lot of objections to doing it this way, but Cathedral City wants. Do you want to add anything to that, Ted, as to?
Well, I think the, the problem here is that it's, at this point, it's a path to nowhere. You've got a small area that is going to be, in theory, built as to part of a intended whole, which we may or may not never, ever come to pass. It's inappropriate to start it at this point, and frankly, it appears that it's just another opportunity for the, for the impression that we're so far along, this has started, let's go ahead and complete it. And the irony is, with such a small portion of the funding raised, it would be foolish to go ahead at this point. But again, this is something that we can only vote and oppose, and indeed, that's what we're doing.
And this was two miles, I believe, right? What they're looking at?
Two miles?
Two miles.
Something more than a mile, I've forgotten.
Was that it?
It was two miles. I will say this, it does not abut either Ranch Mirage to the east, nor does it abut Palm Springs to the north and northwest. It's, it'll be standing by itself. Worse comes to worse, if nothing, if the CV Link were never built, and that piece was built, then Cathedral City would have a jogging path that they could use, probably be poorly situated for overall purposes, but they could still use it, and they would have to maintain it, and nobody else would be joining them in that. So whatever the hazards are, I think Cathedral City feels it's worth it to them. I think our position is, we don't think anything should be built until you have a plan in place so that the cities know how much it's going to cost them in operations and maintenance for the next 100 years, because that pathway, made of cement, is likely to last another 100 years. Or whatever the number is, we have to know what it's going to cost us before we buy into it. And Cathedral City is buying into it without those numbers being known. But that's, in a sense, their business, they want to do that, and if there's no major impact on the rest of the cities, particularly Ranch Mirage. Okay, is any other questions on that, or shall we move along? Okay, we'll move along on to the public hearing. Item number nine, tell us about that, Randy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our associate planner, Josh Altop, will make the presentation on a two-story home that's proposed in Marotta. Josh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, and city manager Binder. The request is to consider single-family permit case number SFP 15006, a 7,693-square-foot two-story home, along with pool, spa, and associated landscaping. The parcel is located towards the southern half of Marotta Highlands Estates and is situated at the northwest corner of Marotta Highland Drive and Eagleview Court. The existing land use is very low-density residential. The lot is bordered by single-family residences in all directions. The pad is level, however, large slopes surround the parcel on three sides. The pad's elevation ranges between 5 and 1/2 and 14 feet above the curb height along Eagleview Court. To accommodate the lower-level garage and living area, the applicant proposes to excavate to a depth of 10 and 1/2 feet below the approved pad elevation. The parcel itself is just over 31,000 square feet. The resident, as I stated earlier, is about 7,500 square feet, and that includes both floors. Lot coverage is 12%, and all setbacks either meter exceed the development standards of the zoning RL2. The subterranean floor is 3,728 square feet in size and includes a three-car garage, storage area, entry hall from the sunken courtyard, three guest rooms with baths, and stairs that go up to the main living area. The main living portion of the home is 3765 square feet and consists of the kitchen, dining, great-room combo, office, and master bedroom with en suite. The east elevation is designed as one of the most sculptural moments of the house. One-slope roof structure and accompanying facade emerge from the ground plane and seemingly suspended peak at 18 feet above the pad height on the south end above the master living portion of the house. The opposite slope roof begins at a height equal to the adjacent flat roof and culminates again at 18 feet above the pad as a plane held above a colonnade of columns. The columns are angled to frame particular views but allow for movement and simultaneously assist in sun protection. Lastly, the master living portion matches the slope of the dominating roof above and facade, but it is finished in stucco, a few shades lighter to further emphasize the suspended gesture of the peak above. This is the west elevation. The entire west facade is finished in stucco, matching the contents of stucco selection on the east facade. The peak roof that suspends over the master living area follows the slope of the east elevation and flattens out to create the long line of the flat roof. This elevation culminates as the two planes of the flat roof and slope roof extend beyond the limits of the interior space to cover a vast majority of the outdoor terrace for solar protection. I just want to pause real quick and emphasize, this is the elevation that would be seen from Eagleview Court. This is the only portion of the home, and I'll go on a little further, that will be exposed as quote-unquote "two-story," or the, the visual that you'll see. The rest of the home surrounding will not be due to the subterranean portion. This is the north and south elevations. The north facade is dominated by the extension of two separate roof structures. One flat roof extends beyond the office over the outdoor terrace, while the slope roof extends beyond the main living features of the house. The slope roof is supported on one end by a colonnade of concrete columns on the eastern side of the house. This sun protection works in harmony with the glass windows and sliding doors, which further enhance the views of the mountains and the valley beyond the Infinity Edge Pool. The driveway enters the site mindful of necessary minimal slope conditions and approaches a subterranean entrance to the house. Designed to eliminate the notion of a simple garage door, the garage and entry gate were devised collectively as a metal screen that provides unnecessary privacy but in a color tone that imitates the desert landscape. The master living area rests above the entry screen, seemingly suspended above the multiple entrances to the home. As part of the two-story, the land use element of the general plan provides policies and programs that staff takes into consideration when analyzing two-story residences. These policies seek to preserve, preserve view shed, privacy, and higher architectural quality. There are some facts about the home. The home is limited to 18 feet in height from the approved pad per the Marotta HOA. The only exposed portion that the two-story home is visible is the southern elevation of the street. Majority of the home itself is only 11 and 1/2 feet in height. The home's buildable pad is smaller than most within the community. The pad is, on average, eight to nine feet above the curb height. Lot coverage is only 12%. The residential home to the south pad is 47 feet higher and over 200 feet away, and the resident to the east is over 100 feet away, and the curvilinear design of the subdivision results in the offsetting of the two homes. In conclusion, the low roof line, coupled with the low lot coverage and the below-grade garage residential element, has significantly decreased the mass, scale, and visual impact of the home, home, over that which would be necessary for a single-level home on the approved pad height. Just a couple of quick pictures of the site, just to kind of put it in perspective. The first picture represents a depiction of the proposed home as viewed from Eagleview Court. The red rectangle is the subterranean portion of the home, only visible to the south. The yellow line represents the pad elevation, and the blue is a portion of the home above grade, which is equal mass and scale to any other resident in Marotta. As part of this, too, there's a height consideration. Section 172100 of the municipal code requires that city council make the following findings in order to grant approval of the two-story and over-height structures subject to the following standards. The southern elevation has a height of 22.6, and that's measuring it from the exposed pad, so that's where you get the full 22.6. That's 2 and 1/2 feet above the maximum 20-foot height. In order to minimize the visual impact, the front setback shall be conditioned to be increased by 2 feet for every additional foot of height. Thus, 2 and 1/2 feet would equate to 5 feet increase in front setback, making the conditioned front setback to be a minimum of 30 feet, which is condition of approval number 15. As proposed, the home has a front setback of 28 feet and will need to increase this amount by 2 feet in order to comply with a 30-foot minimum. There is enhanced buffering to surrounding properties, and the appropriateness of understand, understructure parking shall be evaluated, which was in the report. Visual and spatial analysis relating to building proportions, massing, height, and setbacks should also be conducted. The need for, need and appropriateness of the additional height should also be demonstrated, which in this case it has. Compatibility and harmony with the surrounding development, land use designation, and zoning should also be demonstrated. In summary, as designed, this residence is compatible in terms of architectural style, materials, setbacks, and landscaping to the surrounding homes. The proposed two-story home takes into consideration the sought-out privacy of the neighborhood through the subterranean design minimizing the visual impact to the surrounding homes. The proposed condition for SFP 15006 are similar to the conditions imposed for other custom homes in the private community, and the findings support the recommendation of approval. Staff recommends that the city council approve single-family permit case number SFP 15006 based upon the content findings and conditions in the staff report. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you, Josh. Does anybody have questions, Josh?
Yes, thank you. Josh, can you go back to that item number 16? Is that taken from across the street in somebody's property that they now own, or? Is that taken from across the street and somebody's property that they now own, or...
This is actually a rendering prepared by the architect. This is looking on the opposite side of the street. So we're looking at actually the back of the home, and this is from a elevated slope. Visually looking this way, the only house I could see that... Everybody looking at this is actually below due to the terracing of the community, so we're kind of at the back end of one terrace, at the backside, and the next person would be below it. So visually, this would be a very limited view for most of the residents within the community.
Okay, so you don't have somebody looking right back into this area?
Not typically, not the way the subdivision's designed.
And did I hear you say that the HOA has approved the project?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions, statements? I would just comment, one of the reasons that a single residency comes before the city council as compared to being decided by the planning commission, which does decide almost every single-family residence, is because of the two-story aspect of it. The city of Rancho Mirage has a long history of essentially not permitting two-story homes. Exceptions are made where the topography or other reasons suggest that there's ample reason to make that exception. This is one of those times, and that's the reason that the council is considering a single-family residency. Anybody from the audience like to discuss this matter? Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Randy, I'm speaking from personal, Chris Coy.
Barnes-Coy Architects from New York, and this is my partner in the firm, Rob Barnes. We just wanted to be here today to watch Josh's presentation and to answer any questions you may have, and also to say that we're thrilled to be working in Rancho Mirage. It's really a treat for us coming from New York to get to come out here and work here. And I must say that the planning department throughout has been very professional and very helpful to us. So any questions you may have?
It's quite a structure. You should be congratulated.
Thank you.
Very unique.
Thank you.
When is the completion date estimated to be?
Now you sound like my client. That depends on the builder we hire, I guess, but, you know, we anticipate, once the builder's underway, about a 14-month build.
Okay.
We've never worked here before, so, you know, it's hard for us to answer that question.
Well, we have coyotes up there, as you've probably learned by now.
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Appreciate your being here. We appreciate the wonderful architecture of this very beautiful home.
Oh, thank you.
And you'll be complimented on that, and hopefully you'll be back to Rancho Mirage on more than one occasion in the future.
We hope so. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to comment on the project? Saying none, we'll close it. Is there a motion to approve the project?
I will make that motion.
Okay.
That the city council approve the filing of a categorical exemption of environmental impact pursuant to section 15303, class 3 of CEQA, and 2, the second-story element of the proposed single-family, two-story dwelling, single-family permit, SFP 15006, based on the content, findings, and conditions in this staff report.
Moved in, secretary? Motion carries unanimously. We'll now move on to item number 10, the Sunnylands Expansion Project. Randy, where do we go with this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Josh, you're on a roll. Go ahead and make this presentation, exciting presentation on the expansion plans at Sunnylands.
Very lucky, this is going to be a great project. Once again, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, and city manager binder. This request involves, one, the adoption of a mitigated negative declaration, and, number two, to expand Sunnylands by adding an administrative campus on 15 acres. The location is on the west side of Bob Hope Drive, approximately 1 1/2 mile north of Frank Sinatra Drive. The existing land use is vacant undisturbed desert, zone public-institutional. The surrounding land uses to the west and north are vacant land, zone public-institutional. To the east is vacant land, zoned RL2, which is across Bob Hope Drive. And to the south is Sunnylands Visitor Center and Estate, zone public-institutional and private open space. The environmental assessment was prepared for this project. Resulted in the recommendation to adopt a mitigated negative declaration. Mitigation measures were recommended for air quality, biological, cultural, and geological resources. A notice of determination will be filed with the Riverside County Clerk once a final determination has been made by the city council, and a summary of the mitigation measures is included as attachment number 2 of the staff report. The grading strategy will balance cut-and-fill the site and will minimize disturbance of the existing desert. Building grades have been set to follow existing contours as closely as possible while also ensuring a pleasant, easily traversable walking and driving experience within the new campus and to the visitor center and historic estate. Portions of the site will not be graded to retain the native vegetation, and the goal is not to disturb areas outside the work area and minimally disturb the areas within the building site. So the focus is to do the least amount of impact to the footprint as humanly possible within the confines of the project. This is the overall site plan. The administrative and operation campus at Sunnylands will be a 15-acre addition located on the north and west extents of the existing Sunnylands Visitor Center and adjacent to the existing historic estate. Intended to be a 50-year facility, the campus will be developed to support the mission and staff of Sunnylands and the Annenberg Foundation in a lasting environmentally responsible manner. The campus will be composed of several discrete but interconnected areas, an entry access from Bob Hope Drive that will replace existing estate service entrance on Tamarisk Lane, an expanded habitat research area adjacent to the wildflower meadow of Sunnylands Visitor Center at Gardens, a formalized overflow parking lot of 153 spaces for parking and for tour bus spaces in order to support the visitor center's growing visitation, a 1.5-acre operations yard with facilities for estate management, delivery, storage, and materials. Once constructed, the existing maintenance yard, as I stated a second ago, and buildings that currently take access from Tamarisk Lane will be relocated, which will eliminate any future impacts to the residential neighbors. There is a three-acre admin campus with two intimate outdoor spaces that connect the buildings and facilitate year-round outdoor gatherings and meetings, a formalized drop-off area and covered staff parking, and the campus will be utilizing an engineered wetland whereby all building water, both black and gray, will be purified through a man-made series of aquatic wetlands. The clean water is then sent back out to the campus to flush toilets and irrigate landscaping. Of the 15 acres included within the project site, roughly 8 acres will be landscaped or left undisturbed. Building footprints account for 1 acre, and the site leaving the hardscape area, or the hardscape area, of a total of 6 acres. The expansion consists of five new buildings, which total 46,000 square feet. New buildings include the administration offices, archive building, operations and maintenance, the mixed-load building, and the storage building. 117 covered parking spaces have been provided for the employees associated with the proposed This slide escorts one through the project from Bob Hope Drive to the administrative drop-off area. The proposed campus will minimize disturbance of native desert while meeting the long-term needs of the estate, the visitor center, and the administrative and operations staff. The administration floor plan consists of typical uses found within any office, conference rooms, workstations. Unique features of this building are the two ventilators. Indoor air quality is optimized by ample fresh air delivery through innovative heat cooling recovery units. These high-performance fresh air units work seamlessly with the interiors devoid of "outgassing," quote-unquote, "redless chemicals and products" by consistently filtering air from the outside. This building optimized orientation minimizes east-west glazing and accompanying heat gain while providing abundant, well-shaded southern and northern glazing. This combination of glazing strategies allow for optimum daylight harvesting with minimal needs for electric lighting. The quality of this daylight and direct views onto adjacent microclimate gardens optimizes users' stratification and promotes a sense of delight and well-being. This is the archive floor plan. As for this building, it's mostly for the purposes of storing objects and artifacts. Approximately 60% of the building is mostly large rooms for various storage purposes such as cold storage and high security. The east side of the building used for workspace includes the director's office and a conference room. Other rooms include mechanical, a photo studio, copy room, and object conservation. The artifacts stored within the archive building rival that of any presidential library. This is the operations floor plan. The operations and maintenance building is divided up with offices, conference and break rooms, bathrooms, maintenance areas, and storage areas. The elevations for the operations building, the design for the new buildings largely consists of aesthetically compatible, timeless materials lending consistency across the Sunnylands Estate. The design prioritized campus-wide resources, efficiencies, and durability. Architectural elements of the operation building include perforated steel shade structures, gray split-faced block, and exposed structural steel. This is the proposed material board. Taking precedent from both the historic resident and visitor center, the campus exploits clean, modern forms utilizing white concrete block, white plaster, and well-shaded, high-performance clear glazing. The design proposal for the new campus is largely organized with enduring utilitarian materials for cost-effectiveness and streamlined maintenance. The design focuses the most investment in the outdoor rooms and spaces where Sunnyland staff will gather, the central courtyard, the south garden, and the garden spaces adjacent to the operations building. Although the intent and expectation for quality of materials is highest in these locations, the goal is to find invention in readily available materials, to use native materials and plants to the greatest effect, and to create maximum impact with the simplest means. One of the main focuses of this project is to try to be as close as possible and search out lead certification. From an environmental standpoint, it's optional, but the applicant is pursuing it, and these are some of the options they've chose to take in. It is basically called a 5-0 approach. Zero number one is driving down energy use and consumption by exceeding Title 24 by 25 to 30%. In addition, adding solar panels to help achieve zero net energy. Number two is targeting a carbon-neutral balance through appropriate plant materials, energy generation, and driving down campus-wide fossil fuel transportation. Number three is management of construction and operation waste, which is intended to achieve zero landfill waste. Number four is building materials will be specified to maximize indoor environmental quality and use zero, quote-unquote, "redless" products. And number five, the responsible conservation of water resources. Every effort will be made to eliminate the unnecessary use of potable water for landscaping purposes and to maximize water reuse through conventional measures and sustainable technologies including the engineered wetlands and stormwater bioretention. To minimize strain on precious water resources, plantings at the new campus will be composed of native and adaptive species with complementary water demands. The planting and irrigation strategies will build on the accumulated knowledge of horticulture and operations staff. Regarding water conservation, the project is targeting using no more water than falls in the site in an average year. Roughly speaking, the 15-acre campus receives 4 inches of rain annually, which equates to 2 million gallons of water. So the idea is, as much water as they receive, it'd be as much water as they will use so that there's a balancing effect. The next few slides will highlight unique aspects of the proposed project while I provide my summary. The architectural review board reviewed the project on June 22nd and found it very original and in keeping with the design themes of the Sunnylands Visitor Center and Estate, and unanimously recommended approval of the project. After the planning commission packets were distributed to the commissioners, the applicant contacted staff with questions regarding the proposed conditions of approval. Staff met with the applicant to discuss their concerns. As a result of that meeting, staff agreed to modify conditions of approval number 2C, 411, 14B, 22, and 39AI. Attachment number one of the staff report describes each change requested by the applicant and staff's justification for supporting the change. The planning commission reviewed and considered the proposed modifications to the conditions and agreed with the applicant's request recommending these changes to the city council. The proposed project meets and exceeds the requirements of the Rancho Mirage Municipal Code. The project will be eliminating impacts to the surrounding neighborhoods based upon the location of the site, the landscaping proposed, and the private, non-public uses of the project. Staff has received to this date no outside communication from any source. Staff recommends that the city council approve the filing of mitigated negative declaration and approval of major modification, case number MOD 15008, based upon the content findings and conditions in the staff report. And that concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to address any questions the council may have.
Thank you very much, Josh. That's quite a project you've been working on there.
Amazing.
Good work. Are there any questions of staff?
You know, I think anything that Sunnylands accomplishes is beautiful and always up to par.
Well, you criticize me all the time. Why don't you criticize Sunnylands?
You know, I know where I can and where I can't criticize.
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak? Janice, would you like to tell us just a little bit about the plans and all that?
So I'm Janice Lyle, and I'm Director of the Sunnylands Center and Gardens, and today it's my pleasure to represent the Sunnylands project. So you've just heard this wonderful, thoughtful, and thorough staff report, so my job is to give you some reasons why this is important to us. Today, the trust has 100 employees in California, and our staff in Rancho Mirage is currently housed in trailers, in the former estate manager's house residence, and in a 50-year-old maintenance yard. So the trust has been able, in the last five years, to host the President of the United States five times, to do retreats, high-level retreats that have had international results, and we have welcomed 250,000 visitors to the Center and Gardens in our 3 and 1/2 years of operation. We'd like to have a place for this people who make that happen to work that's actually better than their current situation. So this project was designed in order to ensure that we would have an appropriate administrative campus, and it also takes into account our archives. So the archives, as you heard, have been compared to those of a presidential library. We need to have a building which is appropriate in terms of its humidity and temperature controls to house that material in perpetuity. And then, we also think that in addition to what it's going to do for us, there are many advantages to the city of Rancho Mirage based on this project. So the first and most important one really has to do with the fact that we will move, will reduce traffic that currently goes through the Tamarisk neighborhood. And we will also, by relocating our maintenance yard, we move activities from an area adjacent to some other neighbors over to Bob Hope. So what we've done is we've taken disruptive elements of our operation and moved them so that they will come in off the public street. We think that's a real advantage for our neighbors. In addition, we think that this will be that quiet, behind-the-scenes infrastructure that helps to support our reputation as the Camp David of the West. And we also believe that this project helps us in our leadership role related to sustainability. So the project actually will reduce the amount of traffic that we have on our own campus. It consolidates our own staff in a single area of the property, so we don't have to drive around as much. In addition, we have a LEED Platinum goal for our project that is a public way of stating our commitment to green design, and it will help us in the public message that we currently project based on our current Center and Gardens, which is a LEED gold building. So the LEED Platinum building is in addition to that kind of commitment. The orientation of these buildings, the creation of microclimates, the use of the arid landscape plants, all are part of that process that should allow us to get LEED Platinum status. And of course, the design, as was noted earlier, is integrated into the mid-century modern design of the historic house and the contemporary design of the Fred Fisher Building. So we're very pleased about that integration and consistency of aesthetic. Our water goals on the project are progressive and aggressive. You heard that we only want to use the amount of water that falls from the sky. We've designed the project so that the... We've been very thoughtful about where the plants and the trees are placed. This is not another garden, public garden. It is instead a beautiful, we think, blend of use of arid landscape plants and small areas where our staff will gather that have more intensive planting, but it also abuts an open and... an open and undeveloped desert and there's some consistency between the project and that desert. We are using an engineered wetlands. That is an innovative kind of technology and we will use that again to help in public interpretation. So if we follow our timeline, we will move our staff in by the summer of 2017. We'll post information about our progress on our website regularly, so the public can follow that process over the next two years. And we really hope that you are as excited about the project as we are. We're very grateful to the staff for their engagement with us and we also, and I'll say this on behalf of Jeff Cowan and the Board of Trustees, we're very thankful to the city council for their support of our mission in general. So thank you.
Thank you, Janice. Does anybody have any questions of Ms. Lyle?
I have no questions, but I do have a comment and just to echo what Charlie was saying, whatever Sunnylands does is beyond deluxe and we're so pleased to have you put together what you have done with all the events. And for those people that are not aware of it, you do have a fabulous cafe that come and visit, come and enjoy the food, come and sit outside and enjoy everything that Sunnylands has to offer. Your staff is just magnificent and we are so proud of the work you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, do you think it'll take about two years for completion?
We're looking at a move-in of our staff in the summer 2017, so just two years.
And it'll all be done all the time, not in pieces?
Absolutely.
Good, good. Beautiful.
And I don't know if Lance wanted to say anything. Our architect Lance O'Donnell might speak to that.
Yes, how are you going to accomplish this now?
Well, thank you, Janice, and my name's Lance O'Donnell. I'm a local architect here, born and raised in the Coachella Valley, so not from New York, but spent every day of my life thinking about the desert and building here and couldn't be more pleased to be working with the folks at Sunnylands. So how are we going to accomplish this? We have a really good team. You know, obviously what the Annenberg Trust does here in the Coachella Valley is, you know, first-rate, so the team really has been working on this for about a year and a half. We're going out to bid in the next couple of months. We're just about done with the construction drawings. It should, timing, the only thing that's holding up timing is just making sure that we're working in concert with Sunnylands' demanding schedule. So spring is definitely off the radar and so we're having to wait till the summer. We should be done with construction with plenty of time for them to move in in the summer of 2017. And any other questions that you may have, I'd be more than happy to take.
Are you associated, is it O2 architecture?
Correct.
And the reason I ask is Charlie Martin, who is on our ARB, Architectural Review Board, constantly criticizes me for not mentioning the name of the architect on each project and so rather than receive his phone call tomorrow, I thank you for a wonderful design.
Well, thank you, Ted.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Does anyone in the audience have any questions or statements to make regarding the matter? The attorney, who is paid by the word, doesn't even have. Nice to see you, Emily. Can we have a motion, please, to approve the project?
Dana, I just have one question, Josh. Josh, is there any signage on, any new signage going up on Bob Hope?
You know, with this application, signage wasn't included. I would anticipate there is a rendering that shows a possible monument sign, which we'll approve at a staff level. I'm sure there's some form. It's a good question, Richard. I haven't seen any signage yet, but I would anticipate there'd be some form of signage because there's going to be shipments received on that side, so there needs to be some form of directional signage. The idea is this is only supposed to be for employees and for the services and not any of the guests. The guests are supposed to remain at the current entrance.
So they don't want guests coming down that road, so maybe the monument sign will be minimal size to
Correct.
Just call out the entrance, okay.
I can jump in real quick, yes. It's going to be very minimal. It will state that it's a service entry and the landscaping and sightlines to that sign, and it's probably a misnomer to call it a monument sign, but to that directional sign will be very tasteful and minimized as much as we can because we don't want the neighbors and guests turning in there. We'd rather have them come through that wonderful garden.
Okay, can we have a motion, please?
All right, I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor, that the city council approve the filing of a mitigated negative declaration of environmental impact based on environmental assessment, case number EA 150003, and approval of major modification, case number MOD 15008, based upon the content findings and conditions in the staff report.
Moved in second, please vote. Unsurprisingly, the motion carries unanimously. Congratulations and we thank you for what's to come.
Dana, I think, you know, you and I both sat on the subcommittee reviewing this project and I think if we had to deal with this kind of staffing in all our dealings would make our life a lot easier. Could not have been better relationships than with the staff and their accommodation to some of our needs, so you guys did a great job and come back again.
See you guys. Okay, we'll move on now to agenda item number 11. And I guess we're looking to Sean Smith for this, am I right?
Yes, you are right.
About that.
Thank you, Mr. Binder. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This public hearing is related to the draft relocation plan and relocation impact report for the closure of the Rancho Palms Mobile Home Park. The Rancho Palms Mobile Homes, Home Park, is it 12.3 acre park on Peterson Road. As you can see on the aerial, there currently exists a clubhouse with a pool and spa, a laundry facility and one mobile home. The Rancho Mirage Housing Authority purchased the park in 2008. Most of the homes in the park were purchased through mutual agreement between the owners and the housing authority. Negotiations between the housing authority and the owners of the one remaining mobile home were ongoing for several years and subsequently halted when it became apparent that agreeable terms could not be reached. In order to close the park in preparation for future development of the property as a new age-restricted, affordable housing community, the board must approve a relocation plan and impact report in accordance with state law. The plan before you today was drafted by Overland Pacific and Cutler, a well-established and respected consulting firm with statewide experience in assisting agencies with relocation efforts. This report has been written in accordance with California Mobile Home Residency Law, California Relocation Assistance Law, the Relocation Assistance and Real Property Acquisition Guidelines adopted by the Department of Housing and Community Development and Title 25. The purpose of the report is to provide pertinent information to the residents related to the protection afforded to them and to evaluate replacement housing requirements. The report provides for a relocation program that explains the process of relocation based specifically on the needs assessment. The needs assessment identifies the type of replacement housing that will be required as a result of the relocation. Based on an appraisal of the home and interviews with the household, the replacement home required is a for-sale, three-bedroom mobile home. Based on market survey conducted by Overland Pacific and Cutler, there are approximately 75 available homes in 35 parks within 20 miles. There would be a reasonable, these would be reasonable comparables for the replacement housing we'd be looking for. Government Code Section 65863.7 states that mitigation measures required shall not exceed the reasonable cost of relocation. It is estimated that the total relocation budget would be around $100,000 for this project. If the board approves the plan, the household will be provided with a 180-day notice to vacate as well as a notice of relocation eligibility. Both notices will be explained in detail by Overland Pacific and Cutler to the household. The consultant will further assist in guiding the relocated household throughout the process by explaining the process and benefits available to them, helping to identify replacement housing and facilitating the financial aspect of the relocation. Staff requests that the board approve the draft relocation plan and relocation impact report and authorize staff to commence closure of the park and to expend the necessary funds to cover related costs as outlined in the report and approved by the city manager and housing subcommittee consisting of Mayor Pro Tem Wile and Councilmember Kite. That concludes my presentation. Thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Sean. Are there any questions of Sean? Seeing none, anybody in the audience wish to address the subject? Seeing none, we'll move forward. Is there a motion with respect to the matter?
Yes, I will put a motion forward that the board approve the draft relocation plan, relocation impact report and authorize staff to commence closure of the park and to extend the necessary funds to cover related costs as outlined in the report.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, please vote. Oops, sorry, don't vote yet. Sorry. Yeah, I did ask, but I'll ask again. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak to this matter? Okay, we'll close the public session. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Move now to item number 12. The city attorney, it looks like, is Steve Q. What's this about?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Back in 2014, Governor Brown signed Assembly Bill 2188 and what 2188 requires cities and counties to do is to adopt an ordinance that sets forth or establishes an expedited permitting process for small residential rooftop solar systems. So there was a model ordinance that was provided by the League of California Cities, which most cities have adopted, so we took that model ordinance and tailored it for the city of Rancho Mirage. And basically what the cities are required to do is to have an expedited permit process that allows homeowners to apply for solar permits for their homes through the city's website. And so if anyone's interested in installing a solar panels on their residential units, they can submit their applications electronically to the city along with providing their signatures electronically. The cities also required to, cities are also required to only conduct one inspection and where the cities are only permitted to deny an application or to require the application to be subject to a discretionary permit, which means going on to the planning commission if there were any particular health and safety issues that have been identified by staff in connection with the particular solar panels. So what you have before you is just a pretty basic ordinance that sets forth, that meets all the requirements of the state law. One of the issues that has come up, though, is that there's been some interest in trying to build in some authority for the city staff to take into consideration some aesthetic issues and we've cautioned the staff about doing that. But I think that we may be able to accommodate some of the staff's concerns in connection with some of these aesthetic issues if we build them in to, or we put them into, we characterize them as a health and safety issue. I've had a discussion with the city manager prior to the meeting and so our recommendation is that you go ahead and introduce this ordinance and we will present the ordinance to your planning commission and/or staff to talk about what sort of aesthetic issues we can build into the process. So our recommendation is you introduce it and if we have any changes or we need to tweak it a bit, we'll bring it back for the second reading with those changes.
Perfect. Steve, when you say the council introduce it, are you saying the council should move to adopt the proposed ordinance? Is that what you mean by introduce it or something else?
Introduce meaning that you, this is the first reading and so we want you to introduce it and then we will bring it back for formal adoption and a second reading with some, with the possibility of including some minor amendments.
Okay, we can say, can we not, that the matter has now been introduced?
No, there had to be a motion, you had to take action to introduce it today.
Okay. Steve? Any other questions of staff?
I have a question.
Yeah.
In looking at the staff report, I find no definition of small. What is, what is a small?
Actually, there is, let me see. It's based on kilowatts and I believe it's
So it's not based on size?
Building inspector here. No, it's based on kilo, well, why don't you go ahead and describe that?
The definition for small, Jack Marshall, Department of Building Safety, Rancho Mirage, the definition of small is 10,000 kilowatts, which equals about a 40-amp breaker, which would mean that it could go directly on a typical 200-amp service, which is a typical house on Lock-Lowman, for example, 2,500, 3,000 square feet. Anything bigger than that would not be approved as an expedited permit and it would go through the normal channels.
So if we had a 4,000-square-foot area, that would be considered a large area?
That's correct.
And this would not apply to it?
That's correct.
And we have a separate ordinance right now which takes care of those issues?
Right now, we have a standard building inspection, building plan review system. We are taking plans electronically already, things that this new ordinance would require. The problem was in 2006, when Governor Schwarzenegger proposed the solar initiative, he wanted to have a million solar panels on the roofs by a specific date, 10 years, and it didn't happen. Part of the problem was expediting permits. So they've came to the, they've come to the cities and said the permit process needs to speed up for simple solar systems. A simple solar system being 10,000 watts, approximately 40 solar panels. That's what this ordinance addresses.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hey, Jack, anybody else have any questions?
I do. I had a question from a major company who handles a lot of HOAs and the question was, could we put in that within the HOAs, there are no installations on Saturday or Sunday and nothing before 7:00 in the morning? Is this possible?
Well, the HOAs can control the timing of construction or installation on their own through their CCNRs. And then we have our own construction hours. I'd also like to point out too that one of the requirements to impose on the city by the state is that we, instead of having your standard application form, that cities, cities put together an eligibility checklist and so we have a copy of the checklist that's in the agenda packet and that boils down to whether or not, it's very objective with respect to determining, in regards to determining whether or not a permit should be issued. And so that's what you see in your packet on page 12-9. That essentially is going to be the permit application.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff? Anybody in the audience like to address the subject? Okay, we'll close the audience participation. I would move to introduce the proposed ordinance, which adds this chapter 15.84 to the municipal code establishing an expedited permitting procedure for small residential rooftop solar systems. Second?
Second.
Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. We go to now to item number 13, turf replacement. Randy, who's going to handle this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city manager's water task force will handle this in conjunction with the Sustainability Subcommittee.
Boy, that's a lot of titles.
Yeah. The heavies are here now.
Heavy titles.
Jeremy is in the on-seat there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I would like to start by thanking the Sustainability Subcommittee, made up of Mayor Pro Tem Wile and Councilmember Townsend, as well as City Manager Binder for their guidance and direction on the turf removal program. So the city launched its turf conversion rebate program in July of this year with approval of the fiscal year 1516 budget. Can you, yeah, thank you. And in a generous move by the city, funding for such projects more than tripled from previous years, going from $50,000 to a total of $175,000. Staff accepted turf rebate applications during the month of July, which resulted in 154 submittals being received. Table 1 on the screen details the number of applications received by type, the types being residential, homeowners association and commercial. Table 2 on the screen shows how much of the $175,000 was dedicated to each category and the deficit or surplus that resulted based on the number of applicants. and the deficit or surplus that resulted based on the number of applications that were received. As noted, there was a surplus in the commercial category and deficits both in the residential and HOA categories. In a subsequent meeting of the Water Task Force, staff was directed to reallocate the surplus money from the commercial funding into the other two categories, the results of which can be seen in Table 3 on the screen. So, with the reallocation, all of the residential and commercial applications were funded, but there was still a deficit in the HOA category. So, additional funding for this program would come from the general fund operating surplus, the impact of which can be seen on the screen now. So, with that, the Subcommittee, or, excuse me, the Sustainability Subcommittee is recommending that the City Council approve a budget adjustment for fiscal year 1516 in the amount of $58,576 in order to provide funding to all of the HOA submittals. And that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions, and the other team members of the Water Task Force are also here to answer your questions.
Does anyone have any questions of Jeremy?
So, Jeremy, are we out of the business now?
We, yeah.
Okay, so, until 1617 fiscal year, we're not taking any applications or?
That is correct.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments?
Just one question. Will we be following the same procedure next year?
Who knows?
That seems to have gone so well. Are we, it's going to be a wait-and-see?
Yeah, it hasn't been discussed, but it's something the Water Task Force and the Sustainability Subcommittee would certainly discuss.
Okay, thank you.
You know, looking at the breakdown between commercial and residential, we're really trying to get this program going among the commercial buildings out there. And now, it looks like we're not going to have any money for them if we do get them to go ahead with the program. Is there anything we can do to continue to encourage commercial use of this program?
Well, right now, the program doesn't have anything left in it.
Right.
But we're using their funds, at least, removal of grasses, removal of grass.
And if you'll notice, the, the number of applications was basically one.
Sure.
And so, the word was there, the availability was there. It just wasn't taken advantage of, and there were no applications that came in.
So, anybody that comes in now will have to get in line for next year if we have a program.
Yeah, basically, we won't be accepting any additional applications until funding is available for next fiscal year.
Okay, thank you. Anybody from the audience wish to discuss the subject? If not, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, what is your motion?
My motion is that the City Council approve a budget adjustment in the amount of $58,576 in fiscal year 2015-16 to increase funding for the City of Rancho Mirage turf replacement program.
Second?
Moved in second, please vote. Motion carries. Be sure to somebody inform Governor Brown that Rancho Mirage is doing its part.
We are doing more than our part.
And we'll now move to our final matter on today's agenda, Number 14. And this is going to go to whom?
Whom? This is-
Whom shall it go to?
Our senior building parks maintenance worker, Joel Castillo, will make this presentation, Mr. Mayor.
Was he got to get wound up over there? What's going on?
He's getting ready.
Thank you, Mr. Binder. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the City Council. As Mr. Binder stated, my name is Joel Castillo, and I'm the senior building park maintenance worker. And a few weeks ago, the Water Task Force met with the Sustainability Subcommittee, consisting of Mayor Pro Tem Wile and Councilmember Townsend. I wish to thank the Subcommittee for their direction today. In response to the governor's drought mandates, the City Manager ordered turf removal in public parkways that are maintained by the city most parkways, I'm sorry, by the city. Most parkways are maintained by the private sector, so this only amounts to 72,000 square feet of turf, mostly along short segments of Highway 111. Since I, since I am responsible for administrating of the public parkways landscape maintenance contract, I had the turf removed immediately upon notice by the City Manager. This occurred back in May of this year. I received a call to install attractive drought-tolerant plants. And also, complete with drip irrigation, small boulders, and inorganic ground cover. I will be sure that the landscape design is first approved by our planning department, and of course, I will seek three bids, which would be presented to the council for your approval at a later date. Randy and I are here to answer any questions you may have. And again, thank you to the Sustainability Subcommittee.
Very good.
Okay, any questions of staff? Anybody in the audience wish to address the subject? I would move the City Council authorize staff to proceed with the draft tolerant landscaping projects located within six public parkways and within the city-owned vacant lot identified in the staff report. Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote. The motion carries unanimously, and now Steve Quintanilla will tell us what's going on in closed session.
Mr. Mayor, can you just ask for clarification?
No, you can't, so.
Okay.
Steve? Oh, just kidding.
We're closed.
Okay, okay.
We're closed.
Clarify whatever you have to clarify.
Well, Joel had a part to his presentation, and that was to request some funding also for the corner of DeVal and Frank Sinatra. You know, there's been some complaints about the way that it looks. We do have landscaping between the sidewalk and the curb on DeVal and Frank Sinatra. His proposal was to add birmingham to the backside of that sidewalk, and Josh is showing that photograph right now.
Birmingham where, back at the wall?
No, just right behind the sidewalk. Yeah, there it is, right there. So, the plant pallet and the design would match the design between the sidewalk and the curb now. So, it would be the same edge treatment on both sides, but with some birmingham there would provide a physical separation between the street and the rest of the site because the site is a future building site. And so, we, the intention here would be to keep people out of the rest of the site while providing aesthetic upgrades to the edge of the property. So, that's part of his request.
So, if there's, if there's no objection, I would adopt what Randy just said to my motion.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, now, let's vote. Wait.
No, that's right.
Any more clarification?
Joel, any more clarification?
Any clarification?
That is it, thank you.
Joseph? Sandra?
We want to leave nothing unclarified. This is our last item, our last chance to clarify things.
Kristi? Bud? Sean?
I don't even believe them.
Interim City Manager, Daniel?
You have to have something to clarify.
Okay.
Okay, well, we can't find a clarifier. Okay, all those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, just vote no, I guess.
Councilmember Townsend, could you try your vote again, please?
Sorry. There you go.
Come on, quit slowing me down, Charlie.
I'm sorry. I was just looking for attention.
Okay, the motion carries unanimously, and now we'll find out from our city attorney what lies ahead in closed session.
Well, I first like to clarify that this meeting will end sometime this week.
We hope.
So, the City Council, at this point, is going to recess in a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9 regarding the case known as Veronica Juarez versus City of Rancho Mirage. The council will also meet in closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D4 regarding three potential cases. And the council will confer with its labor negotiator regarding the City of Rancho Mirage and the Rancho Mirage Employees Association, MOU, pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.8.
Very good. Well, with that in mind, we'll stand recessed and go into closed session.